Everybody ready? Ann and Sarah, both out there yet? That sounded like Ann. Did I hear Sarah, too?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, thanks. We'll call to order the regular common council meeting Monday, October 19th, 7:17 PM. Roll call.
Braun.
Sir.
Langen.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Pledge of allegiance, next. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice.
Meeting was noticed on Friday, October 16th. Agendas were posted at the post office library in City Hall.
Personal appearances for non-agenda items. Anyone in the audience that wish to speak anything that's not on the agenda? Did I skip something? Oh, I already marked that off. We mustn't did that. Counsel acceptance of agenda.
Motion to accept, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Langen.
Yes.
Motion passes. Now, did anybody else show up now that wants to speak anything that's not on the agenda since the last time I asked? Okay, we'll move on to the minutes from October 5th.
Make a motion to approve minutes from October 5th, 2020.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a couple of seconds, so whichever one you want to pick there, Cindy. Any corrections or additions on the minutes?
Yeah, can I ask a question? On the second page, towards the middle, there was a motion that tied in a three to three vote. Are we supposed to list who voted no?
Yep, the individuals, if someone made a request to have their vote recorded, yes. There's no, there's no standing requirement, but that has to vote.
I guess I would list that my.
Would you like added?
Vote was no and that that's recorded.
Is that it? Robert?
On page six, it says that the motion to adjourn was a six zero roll call vote. I remember leaving before the closed session because it was nine and I had to pick up my son from the babysitter.
That probably made it five then.
Oh, yeah, that was a five zero vote. I wasn't there. Somebody may have voted no, like Jim, but there were five, there should only be five votes total.
Anyone else? So is it okay to pass this motion with the changes made, the change made?
Note it on the record, yes.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, roll call.
Braun.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Langen.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Motion passes. Committee reports. Finance.
Yes, Finance met this evening. Motion to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $223,582.54. Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Langen.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so for the operator's license, Finance was unable to make a motion, an approved motion, so this is now coming to counsel for a motion, and I have information here if anybody would like to see it. And so, since I'm not bringing it forward from Finance, being at counsel, I can make a motion from the counsel's perspective or standpoint. Okay, I'll make a motion to deny operator's license for Alexis Smith.
Any discussion?
So this motion deadlocked in Finance. Alder Davis voted against, or voted to deny it. I voted against denying it. I guess I would give my explanation. If you look at the packet, the reason why the license wasn't summarily granted is because Mrs. Smith owes about $700-ish dollars to the, to the city's judicial branch. My argument would be that, well, we definitely won't get the $700 if we vote to take away an occupational license that's required for this person to act, to do their job, to exercise their profession. Our judicial branch is equipped with its own teeth. They have their own means to collect funding and enforce a payment plan. I, I think that we should answer, as legislators, the greater political question as to whether or not this person should have a license, and I don't see a problem with them having the license. It's only that they owe the courts money, but the courts are well within their capabilities to get the money and enforce their own payment plan. And we might jeopardize that and definitely not get the money if we take away this person's job, and I don't feel comfortable taking away people's job for some late bills.
I might also add that when we had approved the operator's license for this individual in the past, we approved it under the condition that she would make a payment plan for her past amount that was due, and she has not kept that payment plan current.
I mean, we're in the middle of a pandemic here.
Well, I recall this from last year, actually, this particular case.
Yep, I thought you would, Sarah, yep.
I mean, we're in the middle of a pandemic here. I think that these are some exceptional circumstances, and we should be a little bit more lenient with our bills. This, I know that most of our citizens are probably having a hard time keeping up with bills. I don't, and I don't think that taking away somebody's job is fair punishment. The judicial branch can.
You should, you should keep in mind also that it doesn't necessarily take away their ability to work. They just cannot work so low as a licensed bartender. They're still able to work. It doesn't completely negate the fact that they're unable to work. I suppose my question would be, and I apologize for the difficulties I had earlier, because I would have asked this question, how long has the payday not been current?
I don't know that it says on the file.
The email is dated September 17th, so I don't know if that's sometime prior to that.
That would have been last year, then?
This year.
Of this year, okay.
So I understand that, I think that, that argument has been brought up here before, that when somebody doesn't have an operator's license, that just means that they can't operate alone, but I, I don't exactly frequent the bars, but most bars do have just one bartender, and they will be barred from working at any of those bars, and their, their pool of employers will drastically shrink. So it is more or less taking away their job because it is very unlikely they will find work when they can't work at most bars.
Couple, couple of things you got. First of all, you keep saying that she can't pay her, just because she can't pay her bills. We don't have any idea what she's doing with the money she's making. She's just not paying us. That's the only thing we care about. She could be going to Florida for all we know about it. We just, she's not paying us. The guidelines say she pays us if she wants a license. She entered into agreement, she revoked, just went off on the agreements, not doing it. So as far as I'm concerned, she's not following the agreement. She's irresponsible to enter into something she can't go through, follow through on. Whether, you're saying COVID, we have no idea if it's COVID or not. She could be working and just spending the money on anything she wants. We don't know. She's not here to defend herself. We have to go by what we do know. We do know she owes us money. The guidelines say they have to be cleared or enter into an agreement. We made a deal last year. Finance made a deal, we all made a deal. She enters into an agreement, pays a plan, keeps a license. That's it. She's not gonna. As far as I'm concerned, she doesn't get it. She's just not, and again, she can work with other people. If those bart, or owners of the bars have a problem, they should tell her to pay her bill or pay the bill for her. It's irresponsible, and it's irresponsible of us to have guidelines and to send a message of, just go on, go ahead, we don't care.
She's had, she's had two opportunities to be here to.
I was just gonna say that.
She's had two notices, and she failed to reply on either one, so.
Well, I understand all their verdict, but I feel like that point of view is a little bit harsh. I mean, nobody a year ago was gonna predict that there was a pandemic, and you're right, you're absolutely right, that she could be spending all of her money going to Florida, or she could be a single parent struggling to pay rent, or she could be many other things.
She could be here telling us that.
You're, you're absolutely right that she could be spending it all on Florida, but you could also be wrong just as easily.
She could be here to explain, I guess.
Exactly.
We've offered her two opportunities to, to come.
Well, it meant enough to her, Robert. I think she'd be here.
My biggest problem is the fact that, that she's had two opportunities to prevent her arguments. I'm always open to listen to somebody's personal story and what's going on, but you need to show up. That's the bottom line. I agree.
Agreed.
And then, it's in our guidelines that we have the right to deny, and also, if you look at us globally, if you're behind on child support, for example, the state will prevent you from getting licenses. So it's a common practice, if you're not paying your bills, you don't get your special license because it's a privilege to get a license, not a necessity or a, you know, or whatever. So I agree.
Well, it is a necessity. This person can't exercise their job if they don't have the occupational license.
Yes, yes, they can, and that's okay because we, we're allowed to limit if we feel the right to do that, and that if you don't pay your bills, that's what happens.
Well, we're not gonna get her to pay the bills if we take away her job.
We're not taking away her job.
Yes, we are.
We don't know that.
Most, all right, there's a very strong chance we are taking away her job because most bar, I don't exactly frequent the bars, but I do know that, like, a vast majority of the bars do only have one bartender on a shift, and we're barring her from working at any of those, and I don't think that's fair over $700.
As, as an individual that has worked for bars in this community, and I also operate in an establishment that has people with licenses, it depends on the day and it depends on the establishment. There are very often shifts where there are multiple people working that are licensed and unlicensed.
I'm speaking at a general rule, most bars, I understand that there are bars that do have two bartenders a shift, and I understand that there are some shifts at bars which will have two bartenders, but as a general rule, most bars that I have been to have one bartender unless I'm just visiting bars at odd hours.
This is not, this is not the only license that has been, had an issue with her, her driver's license has been suspended due to unpaid Edgerton citations.
So it looks to me like, if there's a pattern of not being able to pay these expenses, then the last thing we should do is take away somebody's ability to pay the expenses. And like I said earlier, the judicial branch is well within their means. They have the teeth to force somebody to pay their bills, to come up with payment plans. They can fight, they can.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Anybody else wanna say anything? Roll call.
Davis.
And this is to deny?
To deny.
Okay, yes.
The motion is to deny. Burdick.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Langen.
Yes.
Reynolds.
No.
Radke.
Yes.
Motion passes, five to one.
Okay, motion to approve public event packet for Veterans Day chili drive-through and waive any fees.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Sarah, did we lose you?
Langen.
I'm here, I'm here.
Did you catch the motion and the vote?
I said yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Langen.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, number four, nothing to vote on, is that did not move forward from RDA. Number five, I'll make a motion to approve the facade grant for 116 West Fulton Street in the amount of $5,000.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis.
Yes.
Langen.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve quote for landscaping work near Veterans Memorial parking lot in the amount of $2,000 to Tim Clark.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Langen.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's it for Finance.
Okay, hold on from Utilities.
Yes, Utilities met on Monday, October 12th. I'll make a motion to introduce and approve the first reading of City of Edgerton ordinance 20-09, Chapter 12 Municipal Water Utility, Section 12.08 Service Laterals of the Code of General Ordinances.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Langen.
Yes.
No.
Motion passes, five to one.
And the only other thing for Utilities is we did approve the 2021 water and sewer operating budgets, and that is it.
Thank you. Anything come, come from zoning board for us? Plan Commission. Couple things here if somebody wants to take them.
Let me do them. I'm making a motion to approve a preliminary three-lot certified survey map for, at 407 Colonial Circle, Elm Street, Elm High Drive for James Newcomb.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Burdick.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Langen.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Making a motion to adopt a City of Edgerton Resolution 15-20, approving the final three-lot survey, certified survey map at 407 Colonial Circle, Elm High Drive.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call.
Burdick.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Langen.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, also at our meeting on October 7th, Wednesday passed, the committee approved the conditional use permit for Terry Nodestad at 520 North Main, went from temporary to We also approved, after hearing comments by Rachel Murray, we approved a conditional use permit to allow the establishment of a home occupation manicure business at her Savannah Woods Drive address, and also a, same thing, we did the same thing for Leslie Schneiberger for a conditional use permit to allow the establishment of a home occupation massage therapy business at her Park Lane address. Both of them with the conditions that were in the packet that went along with our current ordinances, and mostly because of the COVID issues, one of them's moving out of downtown into the home for a little bit, and the other one will be working out of the home until they get another place to, so that's basically what all we did it for, or why we did it, but they all complied with regulations, and I think that's all we had.
All right, thank you. Anything to bring from Historic?
Historic met last Monday, and we just need this RDA. We saw the prototype window for 1 West Fulton Street that was deferred on RDA then, but the Historic Committee approved certificate appropriateness for the 13, I think it's, it's 13 windows, correct, or the 12?
13.
13, right, and we approved this, this phase of the project and the grant, so in order to move forward and actually get this work done before winter comes to kind of fix the work windows on the building, which we need for RDA to reconvene.
RDA reconvened tonight, and that's coming up next here.
No, we already voted on that.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. You're gonna, okay.
RDA, do you want to cover?
RDA did meet earlier tonight because we didn't have the quorum with, when we met, some of us met with Historic. We acted on the facade grant that we've approved earlier at 116 West Fulton Street, but we sent the proposal back to the building owner at 1 West Fulton Street, the Dickinson Warehouse, for more information and just a more thorough plan.
All right, thank you. Next item is to consider approval, approval of refuse and recycling contract with Badgerland. Want a motion before we have any discussion or background on it?
I'll make a motion to approve the solid waste handling and recycling agreement with Badgerland.
I'll second.
Quick, quick background, or is everybody good with it?
I'm good with it. I like the, it looks like they'll do, as we have now, weekly solid waste, bi-weekly recyclable, and once a month bulk collection, but if somebody wants more than once a month, they'll be able to call and pay for that themselves, correct? Great.
Could I just get one clarification? They're offering electronic recycling at some point, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
The only other thing I would notice that you have a decision to make in the new year regarding the term of the contract, you may recall that you, and you should relate by extending it to a seven-year pen, and you have a plan that allows you during that first year to make that call, so you will keep an eye on that, and as soon as you make that decision, as soon as you proceed with other decisions.
Good.
Ramona, that, I know, on, on page four, at the top 12, this is about the map. Did they, I know that, I know that Badgerland actually followed the contract, the old contractors around town. Did they come up with any different map than what we had, and customers?
We haven't proposed a route yet. The only thing that happened was the last time we changed vendors, they had worked us into their schedule, so they tried their best to continue to use our schedule so as to not upset the effort. They will, they may propose something different, but at this point, we haven't had that conversation.
Okay, if they do, obviously, the city, the residents will be notified that.
Lots of us, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, the phone ring.
Okay, yes, it will ring, yes. Yes, okay.
The phone ring.
Also, just a quick one on number seven, page seven, C at the very bottom, the general liability there, not less than, is that supposed to be $5 in accident? Am I reading something wrong? I don't think that's.
Five million?
Well, we had, we had $5 million above it, so I thought maybe it should be.
Oh, $5 million.
In there somewhere. It should be $5 million instead of $5 in accident.
No, we got everything.
Okay, yep, and also page nine, F, it says recyclable shall mean single streamers according to some section 15. It should be section 16, I believe.
Ann brought up one other change on the very last page. The aquatic center has actually three carts instead of two.
The. The, the only other thing I was looking at was like, well, I don't know, all these pickups that we have for the, for the, like, Central Park or whatnot, or the, or the school, are these all set in stone that are necessary? Have they been looked at? You already got them? I mean, I just, I don't know, I guess I'm just looking at, like, four months out of the year or whatnot, but I see guys dumping stuff in our dumpsters a lot, and I'm just wondering if we can close them off somehow so they're not used by other people as much as they, you know, as, I mean, I, I guess I don't know when they're unguarded, you know, like down at the Central Park down there and stuff. Nobody watches that, and I've seen repairmen in town pull up and dump their crap in there and stuff, and it's just like, you know.
Well, guess what? When we have cameras there, we'll be able to catch them.
Never mind, never mind, we're gonna have, we'll have that covered, all right, never mind. Race track, same thing, and so, yeah, revenue stream, we'll have it covered, I guess.
I actually pull everything into the pool area.
Oh, do you, once it's, okay.
Yep, the dumpster and all the recycling bins are pulled into the pool area.
Okay, because I know the last time we played pickleball there, a few weeks ago, I had to go over and say something to somebody. I don't like doing that, but.
It's, it's by the concession stand now.
Okay, okay, good, thank you. That's what I was wondering.
Maybe we should consider fencing that in. It'd look better, too. Discuss that, discuss that when we get to budget here.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's one thing I've never asked for.
Put a fun umbrella over it. Okay, any more discussion on the contract with the Badgerland? Hearing none, roll call.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Radke.
Yes.
Burdick.
Yes.
Braun.
Yes.
Langen.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is to consider adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 1620 authorizing a signatory municipality to exceed the levy limit for the Edgerton Fire Protection District.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second.
Okay, discussion? Yes.
I do have one question. Am I reading this right, that it says that this agreement, we, all the municipalities that are under this fire district need to sign into this agreement before the levy can happen?
Right.
Do we have any word from our adjacent municipalities as to whether or not they are, they've signed this or not?
I think I see two of them so far this year. Every year it's been approved, so I would, I'd just pay them two with it.
Um, okay. I just wanted to know if we were like the first people to discuss this, or whether other people have, okay.
Two every year.
Okay.
And then, and that's why?
And that's why? I mean, it's just standard, we just do it every year?
We do it every year because it gives every municipality the opportunity, if the fire district comply to the 2% plus CPI rule, which allows their levy to be added on top of ours. If we don't pass the resolution, no other municipalities can take that option. So as a courtesy to all the municipalities involved, we always pass it, and then each municipality gets to decide if they choose to do that or not.
Okay, so we don't, they can't.
Correct, and if they don't, we can't. That's why we all do it. And then you decide if you want to or don't want to. For sure you don't have a choice because they're not going to comply anyways. But there was one modification they might think to their budget that might bring them into compliance.
Then that's what I was gonna, my question, and there's not, no mention of any of that in here, but I guess I'm just kind of, I know what to think.
So this stuff would be taken regardless of that, Jim? And then it's a matter of whether we're able to get it in compliance or not.
Okay, okay, I'm...
I know, it's very, it gets very confusing.
So we can't, that doesn't get brought up at this point? We, they, this isn't, we just have to, they have to assume that, okay, that we're doing this. I just know what I'm...
It's everyone's benefit to do it, and then you...
To do it, and then, okay, that's, that's, okay. But I know what they're planning, so, okay. A little more understanding, I guess. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is discuss and consider 2021 budget. Go ahead with a little of the background down here, please.
All right, hopefully you have your packet and the cover page provides the initial statements to where we are. It updates some numbers for you. The grab budget from the stands was the one major modification that was made to manage request, it was an additional 50,000 added in street repairs, those streets that have been suggested by the municipal service director, listed on the second page of your packet there. If that stands, now, note that the budget isn't done until it's done, so I need you to make any modifications, but if it stands right now, that would give you 40,000 dollars under your levy limit. So a couple of things suggested for the staff that brought up for your consideration, highway aids being one of them. As you recall, we received increased highway aids last year, and last year you took all of that extra revenue and increasing money spent on road repairs. That was a priority of the council. This year, at this point, we hadn't done that. If you choose to do that, take that extra, and we think that this is probably the last year that that will happen, I think it was both years of the budget to state budget. So I'm not sure it will repeat again next year. So if you choose to do that, then you would be increasing your expenses by that $22,000, and then that would reduce or bring you closer to your levy limit. That would be one thing that's, your, in my experience of hearing the council talk about what priorities our street repairs are, that would be one way of increasing the street repairs. You said the ones that were provided before that. You want to address that individually? Remember, before we go on, or should I go through the last few points here?
Let's, let's do the whole points here, and then we'll come back and get them all.
The levy limit issue, and this is maybe what Alderman and Burdick was getting at earlier. Our levy limit is relatively minor this year compared to prior years due to not a lot of growth. So $17,000 is an increase in the entire levy afforded to us. Because the fire district has activities they're taking, mostly it's increased revenue due to increased service, which also results in increased expenses. Those increased expenses make it difficult for them to comply with the CPI plus two. Not complying with that means that their levy increase to us is in a, in place of our levy increase, or it takes a piece of our levy increase, maybe it's what you described. So because of the way the numbers have worked out this year, because of this new business of the fire district and their expenses, and because of the reapportionment that happened with the City of Edgerton, seeing very little growth, but an enormous change in our equalized value to property appreciation, we have a larger piece of the pie to the fire district. That's resulting in the fire district's levy increase to us of $7,500. So over $17,000, $7,500 would go to the fire district in this case. We think that this is somewhat of an anomaly. We don't know of course what the future will bring. Staff has suggested in the past, and suggests again, that if the council agrees to accept this instance of this fire district levy increase request, that if it appears that this will be a reoccurring event, or they will not be able to comply with CPI plus two, and therefore impacting us, then there should probably be a larger discussion with the municipalities about municipalities' ability to, you know, change that or alter that map, so that it isn't affecting the municipality life. And the last thing is just to repeat of the health insurance, kind of an update of health insurance. We did have some modifications to individuals selecting health plans, which has resulted in a decrease in overall health costs, although the percentage went up by 6.5%. The average, the individual choices.
Anybody have any preferences to what we do with the state highway aids?
Yeah, I do. I think we ought to leave that for the, and utilize it for our streets.
I'll make that a motion.
Now, would that come off the $44,000, then? Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Motion passes. So we're just under $22,000 left in the, to the good here. Okay, what would it cost to fence in a dumpster?
Are you talking about screen, dumpster, pool?
Privacy fence or whatever, with the gates on it so you can roll, get the dumpster, get the truck in and out of it to pick it up?
Does it have something on it? It's a valve?
Yeah, it wouldn't be more than that.
Is there room to swing the, I don't know where it sits. Is there room to swing the gates and everything if they weren't enclosed?
Yeah, because it's just out in the, at the parking lot.
Sits on the corner there, the parking lot.
Oh, yeah. It's just getting the truck in there.
Right.
He like goes in and lifts it up into the, over there, yeah.
Unless there's a different spot to put it, but... That could be, that could be up to you guys.
I suppose we could put it clear on the other end, opposite end, so that he can drive straight down instead of trying to get there.
Yeah. Robert?
I have something else. You guys can keep discussing the, I don't mean to interrupt you.
There's a cement pad there. If it's not cement on the other end, is the only where it sits. And then for the, I think dumpsters have to be hard on more asphalt than the screen.
So it could probably be turned one way or another there, whichever would be the easiest for the truck to pull in there and get it.
Yeah.
And leave the parking to the north of it, and put the gates on the south side, maybe? You think, think, you think a thousand's enough for privacy fence, or a couple thousand?
Why don't you, why don't you figure 2,000 just to be on the safe side, and then we know what we've got, so we're not, we might be overextending instead of underextending.
If you're all good with that, somebody'll have to make that a motion to put that in there, I guess.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve, to say up to $2,000 to fence in the, is it the dumpsters? Dumpsters at the swimming pool area?
Any further discussion?
This is Ann. I think there's probably a better way with the $2,000 than making our trash look prettier.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna...
Well, hopefully we can do it for less, but my thought is we're keeping trash from getting dumped in that doesn't belong in it, like we did up with the compost pile.
Well, the compost pile is just for clippings and specific items, and people were throwing mechanical devices in there. The, the trash is quite literally for just anything, and it's a city-paid benefit. Like, are we, are we not able to fit the trash we want to fit in there because the dumpsters are just so full of people throwing miscellaneous stuff in there?
When we get busy during the summer, I have to add up to two times a week that they come pick it up versus once.
How much of the trash is stuff that you guys are throwing away that's supposed to be thrown away, and how much of it is stuff that people are sneaking in there?
I don't know the answer to that, other than I know that there is other trash that gets thrown in there because it's not things that we use at the pool.
But if it's just about security, you can secure it with a cable or a chain and a lock.
Well, security and also the visual, it's, it's a dumpster. We require, we require them fenced in in any, any of the new developments.
You're putting makeup on a pig. Like, it's, it's gonna be a dump no matter what you do with it. I think that, I mean, our municipal, our ser, I can't talk. We can just get a chain and a lock.
But we require all other properties and developments to fence theirs in for aesthetics, so we're killing two birds with one stone there by making it look better and keeping hazardous waste that could be thrown in them, TVs, whatever else you might want to get rid of that you can't get rid of easily, so. Some of the places to get rid of them, tires, so, but...
Is that in?
What's that in?
Is that for our new development requirements that needs to be fenced in, or for all businesses?
I believe it's anything that we've approved now. But if there's no further discussion on it, we'll take a roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
No.
Radke?
No.
Motion passes, four, two. Maybe we get Alexis Smith to pay her 700 bucks, she could help out with it. Oh, I didn't say that.
What's that? Okay, so are you keeping track of these? Are we like...
$19,000 by one.
Nineteen five?
I had a question about what was already on the budget. On our second page, under capital equipment, general government, it was my understanding that we had agreed that we wouldn't need a new printer copier as our, until the, the one we have was just run into the ground. Has that, has that happened?
Those are not in the budget. They're there, so you're aware that they exist as potential problems, but you're not, they're nothing, you put it in the budget, that's why they're highlighted there for you.
Okay, that's the highlighting, okay. Why is a copier $10,000, if you don't mind me asking?
We have the shop here. So the last one we bought was eight years ago, and it was six or seven thousand. So it's a, if you might guess, there's a lot of paper. If you get a lot of paper, so, well, can we go shop for it? And we certainly would come to you with a number that's larger than it needs to be.
The number just like, I read through all this, and that number just struck me, like $10,000 for it.
Just answer it over with, don't worry.
Okay, all right.
It's just not a copier that you throw one sheet in and runs copy off the, prints off all, all the computers back there, too.
It's the fax machine that can scan it.
The, also page, page two under the, under the police, there, the Lexa Paul, 7190. Are we not gonna get some of that reimbursed, or is that following?
So that 7100, the roughly 2,000 of that, that is for the initial startup to transfer the policy that we have now. And we will get a $2,500 rebate back from the League of Municipalities once we have the initial outline. And then every year after that, it'll be 51, 2500 rebates, and 2,500 of that should be from the League of Municipalities. And then we're talking about upping that to $5,000 from that. For sure, we will get $2,500.
So the number that's in the budget, Jim, if you're absolutely correct, is the right number? It's less than $2,500. So it's the 71 minus the 25, the number that's actually calculated in your document. So that capital sheet should have had a note indicating that that's the cost, but we might still get a rebate. We have the right number in the document.
Okay, thanks.
I had a question, yes. Were we able to fund all the parks items, if I'm reading this right, without dipping into developer fees?
Life is good.
Well, yeah, that fee isn't going up, so...
Yeah.
In the next year, we, that's good, that we don't touch that. We may need it next year.
Yeah.
So we still have $19,000 to agree on?
Well, yeah, you know, and if I recall, at our personnel meeting, we had agreed on a salary increase of 1.5%, not knowing what the budget was gonna look like, and we were, we kept it pretty, pretty low because we didn't think that we were gonna have much to work with. I'd like to make a motion to increase that amount by another percent so the employees would receive a total of a 2.5% wage increase for 2021.
What would that actually cost?
So that would increase, that would be, if I have my numbers right, an additional $14,000, Cindy, is that correct?
Yep, $13,970.
Two and a half is, I think, well over last year's infla, I have no idea what this year's inflation is gonna look like.
Yep, yep, you're right. Here's, here's the thing that we've been kind of looking at, is that wages are pretty low here in town, and they have been for quite a while. So we will be doing a wage study, too, and an updated one. We've done one in the past, but we feel that the wages for the city workers are low. And they have been, and we just have not had the opportunity in the last couple of years to give much of a increase. So if we've got the extra funds to do it, I'd say this is the time to do it because there's some years that we, we can't. That's why we were willing to go with the 1.5% is because we didn't think we were gonna have the funds until all of the money, all of the projects and everything came through. So it looks like we had it, so we might as well help to give it to the, the guys and the gals that do all the work to keep this city running.
Would this include or exclude the staff that we've already given an inflation raise to? Like, I remember like a few months ago, we already voted to give an inflation raise to people like our city administrator in chief.
No, we didn't. There's nothing that's been done.
That was a six-month review of the municipal service director as a new employee.
No, this was after that. I remember voting on something like this.
Oh, you know, at our last, the Personnel Committee meeting, that was where we said we would take it to, we would present it to council to go in the budget for a 1.5% increase. But we wanted to see what the budget numbers would be, whether we would need to go, or whether we would need to go lower, or if we could go higher. So maybe that's what you're thinking.
So I'm thinking of the 1.5%.
You're thinking of the 1.5, correct.
Yeah, motion and a second. Any further discussion on, on that?
Would, you said you wanted to do a wage study, right?
Another one. Yeah, the one we had was a couple, three years ago, I think, and it was low. We tagged on with the Evansville one, and we were low at that time, so... it was low, we tagged on with the Evansville one, and we were low at that time, so, we didn't catch up between then and now, in fact, I think we're still low, from what we can tell.
Okay, so, last one's, do you know when the new one's gonna be?
I think we're gonna talk about it at the Personnel Committee meeting after this meeting, after, so Personnel has another meeting after this council meeting, and we will be discussing it at that meeting.
Okay, I'm sold.
Okay, anyone else? Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Motion passes, what's that, leave you somewhere on five?
5,500.
5,530.
Motion for debt reduction with the remaining funds.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
What was the motion for?
Debt, debt reduction.
Debt reduction.
Debt reduction?
Debt's reduction.
Debt, I thought I heard staff, too, but, yeah, debt reduction. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yay.
I'm not sure if it's possible, I can investigate, but most of our debt is not callable, our debt payments are $200,000 a payment, so I don't think $5,000 is going to probably work with most of our bond, like a bond issue, that's, I'm not imagining, so if I can investigate for the next meeting, if you'd like.
Um.
Well, if you don't think it'll work, I'll withdraw my second.
I mean, I'm happy to investigate, but.
Well, I was just about to ask, if, if we have a motion a second, we can just postpone what to do with the remaining 5,500?
I was gonna suggest contingency, put in the contingency fund in case we need that copier, or.
Yes.
Land loader comes in a little early, or a good price on one.
Um.
Just as a matter of procedure, so that there's no motion to second.
I would draw my second, with that off.
Okay, thank you. Does that, does that take the motion off the table, then, or do you have to?
I don't think it.
I don't know the mechanism to withdraw.
Why don't we just, in league, they specifically told us you cannot withdraw a second.
And you can't withdraw your second, so we're gonna have to take a roll call on this.
Well, I.
Okay, sorry.
I would just appeal to the mayor, as the chair, to just postpone it, we can decide a contingency or a, or a debt reduction after, and when it does, her investigation.
We have a motion and a second, why don't we vote on it, and then we know where we can go from there.
Sounds like we do have to vote on it, just.
Right.
Yeah, unless, unless there was a, yeah, yes, for answers, at this point, you do vote.
Yeah. So if there's any further discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
No.
Burdick?
No.
Braun?
No.
Langen?
No.
Davis?
No.
Motion fails, one to five.
I'll make a motion to take the remaining money and put it into contingency.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Burdick?
Yes.
Braun?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just as a clarification of procedure, and once there are further motions, this is what we will then prepare, the legal notice at government payers, so you still have two more meetings to make modifications, if you make significant modifications after the legal notice, we'll have to re-notice, and that may change your timing, but just so you know what the procedure is, this evening, if we are done, we have enough information to fill the legal notice together and put that in.
Thank you. And thank everybody that's worked on this budget again, and actually worked out pretty good, so, hopefully it stays where it's at right now, and we can not have to do any second notices. Mayor, all the person and the staff reports, pancake breakfast for the fire department on November 1st, I don't remember the hours, but.
Oh.
You'll be getting the letter if you didn't get it.
Yeah, I can't remember either, I'm sorry.
Eight to, eight to one, or eight noon, or, I don't know, drive-through, drive-through at the fire station. I just got one question.
Just Saturday, drop a pack back in the, at the state.
I was gonna put that on here, and I forgot, I saw that, you need help?
Maybe put it back to.
Need help?
No.
Jimmy, you got something? I just had one question, did anybody happen to catch that game yesterday? Hey, Jim.
Oh, I forgot, that's your team, oh.
I didn't think anybody. It was, it was the Packers by a week. Oh, yeah, it was, yeah, it was.
Ramon, what are the procedures for recalling an older person again?
And on that note, you gotta be in office a, a year before you cancel. If it, if anybody wants to get done with this, we can adjourn this meeting. Oh, no, I like it going just the way it is.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second.
Roll call.
Davis?
Yes.
Langen?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Burdick?
I'm having too much fun, no.
Braun?
Yes.
Sarah, you have to stay on, though, please.
We, we are adjourned.
Right, Sarah?
We are going to Personnel.